Next item, please.
Next item is action items, special consideration.
Trustee Watts, I believe, Watts has a question.
Sorry, trustee Watts.
No, it's okay. Well, I think I just wanted to add to that is that the vaccine that we see through the city of Dearborn at the Dearborn Performing Center that they today, like the state changed it and up to date, that now residents in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights, Garden City, Melvindale, the residents 50 and over with preexisting conditions are now eligible for vaccines. So not only was it 65 and over, but we see that the March 11th date has now been backed up to March 8th. So we have vaccines here in the city of Dearborn at the Henry Ford, or I'm sorry, at the Ford Performing Center. So, you know, in terms of vaccines, I think we're seeing more and more vaccines that are available to our citizens here in Dearborn. So I think that that's a resource that, that I think some of our citizens, you know, to get on the website for the city of Dearborn and get those vaccines. So I think that's something that, you know, last month, we didn't have that discussion. We didn't have that availability. So we're getting more and more vaccines in our city.
Trustee Watts, was that 15, 50 and over with preexisting conditions?
Yes, yes.
So you have to have both?
You have to, yeah, 50 and over and preexisting conditions. And if you go on the city of Dearborn website, it'll list those preexisting conditions and you can just make an appointment. And I believe, I think I know Wednesday they had a couple left, but I know Thursday they have, they have some left. But if you go on their website, you can just answer some questions and you'll get in and out. Obviously, you have to wait 15 minutes, but Moderna, they are supplied with Moderna vaccines.
Dr. Maleko, can we share the information on the district website for other community members about the city offering additional vaccines?
We already did.
We already have it out on our website? Great.
Yeah, well, the website Chief Haddad had directed us to send it, not through social media and things. He wanted it through email and other communications. So I followed the direction that they provided us.
All right. So we've been sending the information out through media, social media?
Correct, and through the blogs. Also, Access has a vaccination clinic too, so you can go on their website just as well.
And the city will, will continue to offer this as long as they can get the supply of vaccinations, but they have to make sure that they have enough people who are taking advantage of their clinic in the first place, which is why there was a heavy push for this week in order to show that we have, we have the need here in the community.
Trustee Barry?
Yes, trustee Watts, thank you for bringing that up. That's very, very important. And I know Dr. Maleko just touched on it. I was going to mention that Myers and Access has partnered up, and they're also providing vaccines for 50-year-olds with preexisting conditions. I know a friend of mine, I know a friend of mine, yeah, set up an appointment yesterday, or reached out, put her information, and she got a call this morning to be there 3:00 in the afternoon, and she got her vaccine. So, anybody out there listening, yes, reach out to the city, reach out to Access, reach out to Rite Aid. The more people that get the shot in the arm, the better off we all are. So, thank you.
Next item, please.
Action items, special consideration of an action item. Are there any agenda items on this agenda which board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will exclude them from the motion below. I have just a question about 4 to 6.
All right. Before we do that, if we can have the move action items 1 through 26 be approved.
Some moved, supported.
All right, we've got a motion by trustee Petlicov, supported by trustee Dambrosio. Besides items 4 and, 4 through 6, are there additional action items that anyone wanted to ask any questions or discuss? All right. Go on trustee Mosip with your.
I believe those are the same, well, they're Chromebooks orders, but they're for different buildings or different programs. But since they were combined, I wanted to ask if, if they were to be on the same contract, would they offer us more savings, or that was not possible?
Mr. Wall's coming up. Mr. Patterson, Mr. Wall, will you handle this one, or do we need Mr. Patterson?
Probably Mr. Patterson can handle the questions for the bidding because he usually gets that. But what you're seeing is the Title I funds get amended in February and they get released. And we try to rush to make sure we get it to the on the board agenda. So that's why they weren't combined all as one, because they come at different times. Because the buildings themselves are individual plans and they decide how to move forward on their individual budgets. So typically, we did have another agenda item that we pulled today just because we weren't ready because there were some miscalculations. You'll see in April, I said, we should be doing this on an annual basis and combining them to get a better bid for all of them at once.
Yes.
Because a lot of times these, these cooperative bids are for anywhere from 1 to 2 to 5 to 10. But if we knew we have a larger quantity, we might be able to get an economy of scales. But unfortunately, they don't all come to us at once. So what you're seeing, some of the individual ones, they come, we put it on the board agenda, and then we find out later that another one comes, and then another one comes. And so we're trying to revise that situation. And some came to our attention that we're trying to do this year. Just weren't ready because it was, it was, was too fast from the amendment process to when the board, the buildings wanted to move forward. So going forward, you will see something like this on an annual basis. When Title I gets approved, that we will be trying to bring a, bring a project all at once versus the 1s and 2s. You'll see some more in April and some more in May, as the buildings are ready to move forward.
So, Mr. Wall, what you're saying is that these are coming from the individual buildings?
Correct.
And the buildings are not necessarily communicating with each other for us to know what the total is.
Right. And we've asked Rose, who does an awesome job with Title I, to kind of take control of this and say, all the buildings, let's do this all at once. We'll get a better bang for our price, which gives you other money in Title I potentially used elsewhere. But we're trying to develop that process. And going forward, hopefully, it'll be much more smoother and, and do what you're saying, trustee Mosip, to kind of get a better price all at once.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can I just add too that today it was discussed on our executive cabinet and that whole thing, because we know there's going to be coming back to you all for more technology. I mean, that's just given in this environment, even when we are back to some normalcy, technology's not going away. And, you know, it's going to be enhanced even more. So we just had that discussion today on more computers. So, thank you, Mr. Wall.
Mr. Patterson, you want to add something?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Mosip, the bidding, the cost that we're using is from REMC, and that is done statewide. So what the, what they, the state of Michigan does is they ask how many Chromebooks we all think we're going to buy and other material. And then those costs are based on that. So if we were to order more, we would not get a different price, a different cost. So grouping them together wouldn't change the cost for us, because it's already based on the statewide, a very large number from the statewide bidding process.
Trustee Watts?
So I have a question regarding number 5. I see that's for a purchase of 367 Chromebooks. Is the, is the intent that they've loaned out over 900, is the intent that the, that some of the Chromebooks that come back are no longer in working order, or is this so that one's at home and one's in school?
The, the buildings are essentially out of Chromebooks. Several buildings are at so in, as, as part of that. And the intent from the school is to make sure that they have Chromebooks in the school as kids come back in. One of the things we are going to have to address moving forward is that a lot of our Chromebooks are end of life. So a lot of the Chromebooks that we have handed out to students, we are going to need to replace because they are end of life. But these, these are targeted for the building itself, to make sure that they have enough coverage if the kids don't bring Chromebooks in, or if the kids leave a charger at home, if, you know, something has happened as well. They have a little bit of wiggle room there.
So you had mentioned end of life for Chromebooks. What, what sort of lifespan, I guess, should we, can we get from a Chromebook?
Essentially, Chromebooks have a pretty hard five-year lifespan. So after five years, they are, they stop receiving updates. So at that point, we have to start cycling them out because it becomes security issues, and then it becomes testing issues. There's a lot of software that requires up-to-date browser for the Chromebook. And quite frankly, five years is, is what we used to use for full laptops. So getting five years out of Chromebooks at the cost that we're paying for Chromebooks is pretty doggone good. So...
Do we have an inventory in terms of knowing the age of all of the Chromebooks and laptops? I mean, are we looking, are we in the middle? Are we at the end of our inventory? Where are we, where are we?
Absolutely. We have, we, we keep a full inventory of everything in the district. And I am actually in the middle of putting together some of those numbers, and those numbers will, will come. I'm going through the process right now so that they get to the, they get to budgeting, so Mr. Wall can do some budgeting, and then they can make sure that we make it to you guys, so that the board knows how many we have that are over five years old and we're still using, how many are five years old, and what the end of life is. Because we're also putting that, it's the AUP, it's the automatic updates. And so you'll see, we'll get, we'll be sharing those dates as well.
Okay. And then just one more. And when, when the laptops and Chromebooks are no longer useful, what is the disposal? Is there a disposal fee for that?
It's something that we're also talking about, because this will be our first big run of Chromebooks that have gone end of life. Some of them, so far, what we've been doing is we've been kind of taking Chromebooks that are end of life and are no longer being used. And we have been salvaging the screens out of them. We've been salvaging keyboards out of them so that we can keep the other Chromebooks running without purchasing additional ones.
Trustee McDonald, did you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question that just came to mind after listening to trustee Watts. For students that have been issued a Chromebook that perhaps may be towards its end of life, if they're having issues with that Chromebook, do they just contact the district? Are they responsible for any wear and tear on that? Or if it's at the end of life, they can just get a replacement?
So, any of the students who are having issues, we work with the schools directly, and we replace them when they have, if any students have any issues with Chromebooks. Chromebooks that are replaced kind of go into two categories. One is normal wear and tear. We don't charge anybody for normal wear and tear for if something happens. The only time that we actually charge is if there's obvious damage. Like, if there's a footprint on a screen and the screen is broken, that's not what we would consider normal wear and tear. So we would charge for the screen itself. We don't even charge for labor or any of those issues. We just charge for the actual parts. Thank you.
Dr. Maleko, I want to offer you best wishes to replace him, Mr. Patterson.
Since he's on, can we give him another little salute?
Yes, thank you, thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
I'm glad to hear you're going to have that inventory of Chromebooks done before you leave. One thing I just realized is, when I brought up action items 1 through 26, I mentioned the wrong number. There's actually 27 action items. Apologies, it's a lot of action items and I miscounted them. So it was really going to be action items 1 through 27. I don't know that we need to do...
28. Approval of donations is 28.
It's 28?
Yeah.
All right, is 28 our final number? 28 action items? 27, because the one.
27, it says on mine, yeah.
Because we, we lost, we lost the one item.
Oh, you took off one.
This is a new, this is the update.
Okay, I have the old copy then, I'm going to give me, sorry.
All right. If there's no other questions, let's just end right there when we're still back to 27, before that number changes again. Were there any other questions, though, on the numbers 4 through 6?
No.
All right, we've already got the motion and the second. Could I please have a roll call vote?
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee De Ambrosio?
Yes.
Trustee McDonald?
Yes.
Trustee Mosip, yes. Trustee Petlicov?
Yes.
Trustee Watts?
Yes.
President Thor?
Yes.
At this time, I will be reading a summary of the agenda items that were passed. Number 1, approval of warrants. Number 2, approval of contracts to Ultimate Chronos Group. Number 3, approval of award to Plant and Moran. Number 4 to 6, approval of contract to Procedo Holdings, Inc. Number 7, approval of contract to Dell Computer Company. Number 8, approval of resolution authorizing the issuance and delegating of the sale of 2021, refunding bonds per board report 20-70. Number 10 to 11, approval of contract to Spalding Decker Design. Number 12, approval of award to Gorno Ford. Number 13, approval of award to Foresight Design. Number 14, approval of award to AIS Construction Equipment Corporation. Number 15, approval of contract with pricing through Wine's Guards and Payment to Deer Company. Number 16, approval of contract with pricing through sales equipment and Payment to Deer Company. Number 17, approval of award to Schreiber Roofing Company and Lutz Roofing Company. Number 18, approval of award to Fairlane Ford and Georgensen Ford. Number 19, approval of contract to Wine's Guards. Number 20 through 23, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P to 12. Number 24, approval of financial statement. Number 25, approval of resolution for adoption of the 2021 budget per board report 20-76. Number 26, approval of move of instruction. Number 27, approval of donations.
Thank you very much, trustee Mosip. Next action, or next item, please.
One second. Discussion items.
The discussion item is on policy updates, policy 2421, the career in technical education with Mr. Mustenan.
Mr. Mustenan should join us. Good evening, everybody. Yes, the, as our protocol determines, any policy, new policies or policy changes are first brought to the policy committee. From the policy committee, they're brought to here, to the board for a formal discussion. And then, if there are no changes, and if the board agrees, they're then brought to the next meeting of the board for a final approval. The board policy committee met on February 8th. They looked at a new policy, policy 2421. It's on career and technical education. This policy is required. It's part of the requirements for our CTE programs. The policy that was presented to the policy committee is a policy that other districts are using. It is a policy that was created by Neola, which is our policy company that we contract with, that creates policies for us based upon current laws, based upon current recommendations and guidelines. This policy was shared with the board at that committee meeting, and then it was also shared with the entire board in board briefs. And it is now here for discussion amongst all of you. And questions?
I do not see any questions at this time. Next item, please.
Board of Education Business, acknowledgement of correspondence.
All right, I don't...
Just one.
Yes, Dr. Maleko.
So obviously, a lot we've received on the return to school. So I just have to mention, and I share this with President Barry, but a great teacher over at Hague, Ms. Jo Ray Greco, shared some pictures from my time at Oakman and handed them to me today when I was over at Hague. And so I kind of call this correspondence, but I just feel, think so highly of her. And this was back in 95, 96. And we were sharing some of the pictures, so it was kind of neat. She had them ready when I came into a class. Here, I have these for you, you know, that kind of thing. And I am going back there to read. So it's kind of correspondence, so. Giving her a shout out, Ms. Greco.
Tell her I said hello.
I will.
Are you going to show some of these pictures online? I noticed you had a lot longer hair back then.
Mary, you remember me at Oakman.
My girls were, both had Jo Ray, so, oh my God.
I used to volunteer coach, and I did the student council, so.
Maybe we'll put the pictures up on the district website.
I don't know. I'll be talking to David about that, not doing that.
All right, next item, please.
Board member committee and organization reports.
Trustee Petlicov.
I, I just have an update, and you saw it in board briefs, that I'm trying to get together a city relations subcommittee meeting. And it's always a logistical fun fest because we have to deal with a whole nother government entity in order to pull it off. So I just wanted to give you all the opportunity. I will be giving the two trustees, who are my committee members, trustee Watts and trustee Dambrosio, the agenda. But I wanted to give you all an opportunity to, if you have an agenda item you would like to see us discuss with the city, to forward it to me so that I can include it. It may not be put on the first agenda, because that meeting is always difficult to get all the administration and directors from the city together, especially under these circumstances. We do always talk about facility usage and shared resources, so that you know that's already a topic. And we will be talking about security issues that we share responsibility with the police department. And that will be under our closed session because of the new opens meeting law that allows us to discuss security issues without broadcasting it publicly. So if anybody has something else they'd like to have discussed with city officials, just send me a shout out. Thank you.
I know the finance committee also had a meeting, I think it was the day after our last board meeting. I believe they were getting a presentation on the, the budget. But I don't know, trustee Watts?
Yes, I'm ready to give that report. We did have it the day after our last meeting, but we also, a lot of what we covered was mentioned today when Mr. Wall was up speaking, including purchases of vehicles and other things, restrictive funds, how you have to spend them first, the 14 bond refinancing. So I'm going to try not to be redundant and go through some of the other things that we discussed. When we had our meeting, it was basically to delve a little deeper into the things that were discussed the night before at the regular board meeting. So just to give a little recap, the budget cycle begins with the governor's budget proposal, and then the district must adopt our budget by June 30th. And there's lots of adjustments can be made during the budget cycle. The three biggest considerations are state aid, student count, salaries and benefits. We originally expected a $650 per student reduction in state aid, and that was either to come last year or this year. But after things kind of shook out, instead, we ended up getting an increase of $75 per student. Last year, we had a student decrease of 124 students, and this year, we had another 183 students. Districts across Michigan had the same issue. So the state recognized this, excuse my cat, the state recognized this, and made adjustments in the formula to give all the districts a buffer, because they were all having similar student losses. We received COVID funding of $19 million, and we are projected to receive 38 million more in the next round of COVID funding. But right now, the legislature is stuck deciding when to allocate it. There's political infighting that's going on. So hopefully, that'll be released soon. With CARES, we were able to purchase textbooks and with online components, including 5th grade English and 8th grade math. We were able to stockpile a lot of PPE and other supplies, including like the related supplies, cleansers and that kind of thing. We were able to keep from laying off 16 teachers, and then actually hire some additional ones, which helped reduce our class sizes, which not only is operable in all circumstances, but certainly better in these circumstances with social distancing and all those things that we need to comply with. We had $13 million in gain in revenue, and only $8 million in additional expenses, which allowed us to address some of the safety concerns that were in the bricks bond. We reserved, excuse me.
You should be here with us.
We reserved some of those funds and to plan perhaps additional support, staffing hires. CARES 2 funding can be used for some infrastructure needs. I think that was mentioned earlier. And we also discussed our food service budgets. The costs were down, the revenues were up. And with food service, we have to maintain a 10% reserve. And so then we also have to present the state with a plan on how we're going to spend the other money that was received. So those were kind of the things that we talked about that weren't not discussed already in this meeting. So if I missed anything, Mr. Wall, if you want to add to it, or any other members of the finance committee, please feel free to jump in.
Mr. Wall's giving you a thumbs up for a job well done. Or it might have been for your cat. I'm not really sure what he's giving.
The cat's getting annoying, I have to tell you. Okay, thank you.
All right, any other committees? All right, next item, please.
Board member superintendent commentary.
Trustee Petlicov.
Yeah, we've heard again tonight, but a very limited number of parent concerns about reopening again. Even in the most ideal of circumstances, without a pandemic and without COVID, it's always difficult to please everyone. And we know that your child's education is one of a parent's most passionate interests. And they are going to have an opinion. And we know what they say about people with opinions. Everybody has one. That being said, I want to let the community know, that our, our staff, our parents, our students, that there isn't a person sitting around this table, that there isn't a person in any of our buildings that doesn't have the best interests at heart of everybody's health and safety, their emotional and social well-being, and their educational experience, and that we have all done the best that we can do under the least ideal of circumstances, and not the best. And we know if we all have a little more tolerance for the challenges that we're having to face, as trustee Barry said, this has been the biggest balancing act we've ever had to develop. We cannot please everyone at any given time, even under the best of times. And now we're trying to please everyone during the worst of times. And all we really want to do is make sure that we are all here on the other side of this, and we can move forward. And we will find out how resilient we all are, and how we can look for the positives out of all of this negative, and discover that we might not be having our students learning the traditional way, or the way that we thought was going to get them into Yale or Harvard immediately. But they're going to be learning. They're learning something. And they're, and we have to find a way to utilize all of this. They're learning something and they're and we have to find a way to utilize all of this new environment and promote success in and with a different outlook than all of this negative that we're hearing from the community, as difficult as it might be. And I'd just like to give everybody a pat on the back socially distant and and say that we all need to have some patience with each other yet again. We and we have and we have to give some acceptance to the fact that we're not going to have a perfect answer to anyone, but that we're going to do it as perfectly as possible to make sure that we are here to enjoy another year.
Very well said, Trustee Petlicoff. Trustee Moses.
Yeah, well said, Trustee Petlicoff. I'd like to shift to something that we mentioned today, which is the National Day for Women or International Day for Women, actually. So, in that remembrance, I salute all the women for their contribution to our society. As a proud son of an immigrant, hard-working woman who endured so much to raise myself and my siblings, I'd like to recognize and commend all women. I would also like to thank our our colleagues who are serving with us on the board, Trustee Petlicoff, Trustee McDonald and Trustee Watts. I would like to salute and thank all the women, staff members of Dearborn Public Schools. This Women's History Month as well serves as a reminder for us as a district and overall as a nation that we have a responsibility to empower women and respect them who participate in every aspect of our society. I'd like to also mention something that our district is doing on March 10th, the high school options, something that I've always asked for. So, parents are very clear for their eighth graders and for their middle school students as they move forward, what options that they have. So, parents can tune in to the district's website as well as the YouTube channel, the Facebook page at 6:30 on March 10th to learn about the different programs that Dearborn Public Schools offers for secondary options. Those were my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Moses. All right. Is that Trustee McDonald's got her hand up?
Yes.
All right.
Yes. Trustee Moses just mentioned one of the things that I wanted to mention about the options that are available. Here we go again. Gypsy, move. She has to have the limelight. And I'm so thankful for what Trustee Petlicoff said. It was very well said. I just want to add a couple of things that we need patience and we need grace right now. And I do think that one of the things that although the pandemic has just been horrendous, I think it is giving us as a society and as a country, an opportunity to hit the reset button on a lot of the way we've done things in the past.
Law's a warrior out.
He muted.
She muted. The cat muted you.
She sure did. A lot of the way we've done things in the past, we have a chance to do things different, to think differently. And I also just want to let the community know that we, although things are looking up, I'm very positive, we're moving in the right direction, we could turn it around as quickly as I mean, just incredibly quickly if we're not diligent. So, I just wanted to add those few statements. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee McDonald. I will mention two comments briefly. We already talked about the fact that we've just we're about to hit the one-year anniversary of when we had to shut down our schools. And I've got a picture in my office of one of my last school visits because it was March was Reading Month, which is still going on. But it's just going on so different. And I look forward to when we can really, really get re-engaged back in the buildings and and be out there with the teachers and the students again. The second thing I'll bring up is that in a couple of weeks, we've got our scheduled spring break. And I always mention it from year to year that all the students that are leaving for spring break to be careful. This year, I'll say be careful and I have completely different meanings from anything that we had said before. Be responsible, be respectful. Everybody is a product of Dearborn and if you do something wrong, it reflects poorly on our community. So, during spring break and in everything you do, please make sure you're being a good example for our city and our schools. Next item.
And safe.
Trustee Watts.
Trustee Watts.
Thank you. Well, Trustee Petlicoff had mentioned this earlier, and I just wanted to say thank you to all of the staff and administrators for allowing us to come through the school. We had seed, we had gone through, I think, Stoughton, Snow and Atso, Whitmore Bowls last Monday and just having some of the students there reminded me and it was so, as my kids would say, don't say it, but like, it filled my bucket. It was so nice to see those students there and they were all wearing their masks. And the one particular classroom, the teacher was having them do a writing assignment, how they felt about the first day. And there was one student, I remember her, and she was adamant that she did not want to be there. And the anxiety, I think that it the unknown for her. And, you know, and I think a lot of the times, you know, we we fear the unknown. And I think, you know, hopefully, by the end of the our quick tour in the classroom, I think, you know, after some conversations, you seem to be feeling better and some smiles. But those tours and seeing the kids in the classroom was something that I didn't think would take a year later, but I think with our safety protocol, seeing all of the PPE, you know, hearing the teachers, some of them were so nervous, they said, their first day. But that was just truly something that was special and I thank everybody for sharing their classrooms and their buildings with us and their students.
And thank you, Mr. Leacher, for letting us follow him like puppy dogs to all of the buildings.
Yes. But it was just, again, it was just so nice to see the teacher and the students back in the classroom. That was something that I think I'll I'll remember and I take it with me, so thank you.
All right. Next item, please.
Request for information or future agenda items.
Okay, I don't see any hands up and it looks like Trustee McDonald's cat froze her screen. So, next item, please.
Future meeting dates, Monday, March 15th. HFC meeting, 7:00 PM via video conference. Details to be determined. Check online at hfc.c.edu/board-meeting-schedule. Monday, April 13th, 2021, P-12 Board of Education Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Frank Frenchie Boardroom and virtually available live via YouTube at the YouTube channel for the district as well as the Facebook page for the district and the cable channel Comcast Dearborn Channel 19 and WOW Channel 15.
At this point, I will adjourn our meeting. Have a great night, everyone.